Good morning. Douglas Johnson here, I'm Chair of the Housing Committee. This is our June 2025 meeting, so welcome everyone who's here. We've got all our members here, so I'll ask to introduce everyone in a moment. And yeah, just say we are comfortably sitting in a cool town hall on a hot summer's day. So thanks. Usual housekeeping, please make sure that your phones are turned off or on silent. Toilets and exits are in the usual places as they have been for the last hundred years. No fire test planned for today, if it goes off, it's a fire, and get out as usual. It's being webcast, so that's available now or in the future for people to look back and check what we said, so that's all good. I think that's it really. So we'll just go round and do introductions if you like. So Douglas Johnson, councillor City Ward, Chair of the Committee. Go to this side because we've got a substitute today. Karen.
Councillor Karen McGowan substituting for Talib Hussain.
Councillor Matt Dwyer, Burley Ward.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for First Park Ward and led spokesperson on the committee.
Alison Norris, councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Yeah, good morning Chair, I'm Richard Williams, I'm a member for the Stellington Ward.
Councillor Penny Baker, Member for Stellington Ward and Deputy Chair. Sorry, I'm having problems with my mic.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleithers Valley.
Thank you, and I'll just ask the officers tending to introduce themselves, so we'll go round this way now.
Hello, I'm Sherry Grant, I'm the Assistant Director for Legal Services.
Hello everyone, I'm James Clark, I'm the Director of Housing.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
Right, thank you everyone there, and as usual for any other officers coming up to present an item, I'll ask you to introduce yourself at that point in time. Thanks also to Alan who's doing the tech and signing members in as always. So, okay, so let's go through the first items on the agenda. Agenda one, well, item one is apologies for absence, and we've got apologies from councillor Hussain, the rest of us are here, I think we're expecting councillor Atkinson shortly. I think that's correct, Joanne, tell me if I'm wrong? Okay. Item two is exclusion of press and public, and I don't think we have any items where that should arise. Nope. Item three is declarations of interest. Anyone? No? Okay. Item four is the minutes of the previous meeting, so they're on page 11 of the Agenda Pack, which is also available online for the benefit of anyone watching on the webcast. We have the minutes there of the April 2025 meeting when some of us were here. Does anyone want to pose this as a correct record if they were there?
Sure.
Sure, okay, propose, Paul Turpin, councillor Turpin, and councillor Norris, certainly. Okay. Shall I take that as a correct record? Yep, no objections to that, thank you. In terms of matters arising, I'm just going to note the fact that we did identify the garage letting scheme as an item to go onto the work plan, and I think that Joanne will pick that up on the work plan item. Any other matters arising? Councillor Williams.
Thank you Chair, I just noticed actually that in the minutes, my colleague councillor Penny Baker was deemed to be present, but she was also offered her apologies.
Two places at once.
Okay, so councillor Baker was not there, let's make that correction.
You are exceptional.
Sorry, you were there.
She also says my apologies.
Right, okay, so it's your apologies. Yeah, sorry, yeah.
So you're definitely here, so I'll get that amended, thank you.
That's, that's fine, yeah, so we'll just take you off the apologies. Right. Now, thanks for lacking it up. That deals with the minutes, so I think I sign a couple of those in a moment. So, back on to here, so we're on to item five, that's public questions and petitions, et cetera, and as far as I know, we haven't got any... Nope, no public questions, petitions. Number six is members' questions, similarly, don't think we have any members' questions today. No? Okay. So item seven is the work programme, so I'll hand over to Joanne Cooper.
Thanks Chair. The main difference on the work programme is that we've added an extraordinary meeting which is now on the 24th of July. That's going to be to cover mainly the allocations policy. We're also going to have the year ahead report then, because that will give officers the opportunity to feed in feedback from a work planning session that we had a couple of weeks ago. The other additions is the allocations policy review, which has been moved on to the next meeting. Yes, I just said that. The tenants levy review has been moved into pending, and the review of private housing standards intervention and enforcement policy, which has been added in December. And we've also had an additional item about fire safety, external wall surveys, that was going to be added but has now been withdrawn since, since this was published. Regarding the garages, as the Chair just mentioned, members had asked that an item on garages be added to the forward plan. This will include the position on letting, stock condition and capital investment opportunities. The date for the item will be confirmed with the Chair following further consultation with officers. It has been added to the pending section, but again, it was after this was printed. That's all, thank you.
Right, thanks very much. So we've got the work plan with the additions on page 24, plus the garages that we identified previously, and then minus the external wall surveys, I think we're being advised now. I think it's fair to say that as a result of the work planning, there will be more items coming on in the future about facing up to future legislation and changes in standards, which is important for this committee to be addressing at some point, so that will come on in a future iteration, I think that's the intention. Any immediate comments or questions? Councillor Norris.
Yeah, I was wondering what's happened to the asset management strategy? Because I couldn't see that on there anywhere, and last, we were being told last year that that was a really important thing for us to be developing this year, moving from the interim to the full, and that there were lots of key questions, so I was surprised not to see it.
Yes, we could have a look at that. Joanne, is it on the, it should be on the work plan somewhere?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so if it's not, and it was, and it's a major piece of work, so it should be, can we ask today that that's picked up for the next iteration of the work plan? So yeah, well spotted, well checked, thank you. Anything else on the work plan? Yes, councillor Turpin.
And we, we discussed at a previous meeting about how we could support the TARA's, and I think, I think it was Alison who said it, TARA transformation was the phrase you used. And yeah, so I think that would be a really good thing to look at at some, some point, or even to pilot perhaps somewhere.
I think that's due to be addressed within what we've provisionally called the tenant levy review, because I think it's something that arose from the tenant levy review which was triggered by a petition, but the consequent work has meant that there's some much bigger issues around how this council supports TARA's, so I think it's in there. I mean, it might be sensible therefore to just amend the name of this item here from tenant levy review to stroke supporting TARA's, or something like that. Does that seem... Yeah? Councillor Baker?
Thank you Chair, on that, I mean, it's what the tenants want to do, and it's the tenants' money, so we are asking the tenants how they want to do this, aren't we, and not doing it the other way around?
Yeah, there's been some degree of consultation with tenants so far, but obviously needs to be a lot more work done in this area with just that in mind, I think. It's a good point. Okay, and for the comments, are people happy to accept that work? Oh, sorry, councillor Norris, something else?
Only that, as far as I understand, it was more of a general introduction, the work planning session, and we're going to have another work planning session on, like an action plan and target setting. Yeah?
Thanks, yes. Did you want to respond, James?
Yes, that's absolutely right, so we have written up the outcome of that meeting, I think it's been circulated to the committee. I'm absolutely happy with the Chair's agreement to timetable for the concessions to flesh that out into a full work plan, Chair.
Right, okay, so I think it's a fair point, it's just perhaps worth noting, of course, it's, councils don't just turn up to these committee meetings formally every couple of months, in the background, there's a load of work in preparation, and then presumably that will be reflected a lot in the year ahead report, which is due to come to the July committee and will therefore be public in good time before then. Okay, all right, does that exhaust that issue? Is everyone happy to approve the work plan with all the amendments that we've just discussed and which Joanne has written down and will incorporate into a future version? Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to item eight, so I'm going to hand over to James Clark, our new Director of Housing. We're looking at page 33 of the Agenda Pack, and James, over to you to take us through it.
Thank you Chair, so good morning colleagues, this is the, this is two things in one report, this is our annual tenant satisfaction measures for 2425, which we are due to submit to the regulator in a couple of weeks' time, and it's also the standard quarter for 2425 performance report, and given it covers a lot of the same ground, we've grouped it into a single report, but I will take it in turn. Just a quick reminder for those members who are maybe newer to this, tenant satisfaction measures were introduced by the regulator of social housing a couple of years ago now. This is the second year in which we as a large social landlord have been mandated to collect this information and share it with the regulator. All of the KPIs and all of the questions that we ask tenants are set nationally, so we don't have any scope to alter that, and that's so that the regulator can produce national data sets that allow us and our tenants and other stakeholders to compare our performance against our peers. I'm going to start with the tenant satisfaction perception survey, which we conducted this year again, this is the second year we've done it, and in Annex A you can see the results with this year's results and last year's results. Overall, it's a really encouraging set of results that shows positive movement in tenant satisfaction across all of the measures that we are required to report on. Most notably, overall satisfaction has increased from 61% in 2324 to 67.6% last year, and within that, there's particularly positive movement on satisfaction with our repairs service, with the safety and quality of our homes, and with the contribution we make to our neighbourhoods. We also ask tenants about their satisfaction with how we, whether we treat them with fairness and respect, and this was already quite high last year at 78%, this year, I'm pleased to say, it's increased again to 80%, which I think is a result we're particularly proud of. Satisfaction with complaints handling has improved slightly, but it's still noticeably lower than, than other measures. I should say, colleagues, this is common across all landlords, and it's partly down to the way the question's asked, that's not an excuse, it's just, I think it's relevant for colleagues to be aware of that, and we do recognise there is quite a lot of work to do at this council to improve our complaints handling, and I'll come on to that in a moment. So overall, on the satisfaction and perception survey measures, an encouraging set of results, which we think partly reflects the huge amount of work that's happened in 2425 across key areas, particularly the repair service, health and safety, and the work we do in our neighbourhoods. The second set of tenant satisfaction measures, again in Annex A, are what are called management information scores, so that's performance information that we collect about some of our core areas of, of service delivery. I think that the most positive aspect of that, of this here, is that the repairs service, performance on the repairs service is noticeably improving, particularly emergency repairs performance, which has improved to 91% this, last year, dealt with on time, compared with approximately 65% in the preceding year. At the same time, and it's not clear in the data, but, but we know this, the backlog of overdue repairs has reduced significantly over 2425, albeit there is still a lot of work to do on that during this financial year. We continue to report 100% compliance across key health and safety areas, including asbestos, legionella and lift safety. Gas safety has dipped very slightly, the issue there remains access to properties, approximately 200, 215 properties where we continue to focus our efforts to gain access, and until we address that, we won't be able to achieve 100% compliance on gas safety, albeit that is a significantly improved position compared to a couple of years ago. Decency has reduced, this was expected, because currently we are doing a stock condition survey of all of our properties, so we're going out and visiting and inspecting every single property, and as we do that, we find issues in properties, and that allows us to report more accurately on the decency position. That will continue, I suspect, to drop through the course of this year as we work our way through stock condition surveys, we're obviously then dealing with the issues that we find, and once that's dealt with, we would expect the figure to increase again. And then finally, on this section, on complaints, which I've already touched on briefly, we've seen fewer complaints overall this year, but we have seen an increase in the number of complaints that have reached the second stage, stage two of the process, and, and that's one of the key reasons we think why performance on turnaround time at stage two has been impacted, so you'll see in the, in the tenant satisfaction measures that performance on turnaround for stage two has dipped this year, and that's something that we need to focus on this year. So to reiterate, those results will be submitted to the regulator of social housing by the deadline on the 30th of June, the regulator will then do what they do with the data nationally, and they will publish it all on their website, I think last year it was in October, so we can expect in the autumn to have a good idea of where we stand compared to our peer group. So that's the first part of the report. The second part, I won't go into detail on this, I think I've covered a lot of it, but the, the, the next part covers performance in quarter four of 2425, a lot of it, as I said, is covered in the tenant satisfaction measures. The two areas I did want to put out for the committee, because they're not explicit in the TSMs, are voids and also temporary accommodation. So on voids, in quarter four, our turnaround time was 74 days, which is down from 109 days in 2324, so that's really positive movement. At one point, we had more than 1,000 empty council properties, we're currently at around 744, and we expect that to reduce significantly over the coming weeks as a new contract comes on stream, the Fortum contract. And on temporary accommodation, that peaked at 800 households in July 24, currently it's approximately 700, but within that, we've seen a significantly stark reduction in the use of bed and breakfast accommodation, so it's down from a peak of 415 households to currently about 225 households. And Chair, the two are linked, so a lot of this is about getting our empty properties back into use so that we can support people out of the accommodation into those, into those previously vacant council homes. Finally, we're currently reviewing our performance framework for 2526, partly to reflect, I guess, the latest iteration of council plan priorities, but also to reflect the fact that the regulatory and the legislative context for the housing service has changed significantly over the last 12 months, so committee members well know, well may, may well notice some changes in, in how we structured future reports, but as always, any feedback on that is really welcome. Thank you Chair.
Right, thank you, it's a really comprehensive overview there, and it's, you know, good to see that, you know, the message is about substantial improvements in most of those measures across that, so that's very welcome indeed. Right, okay, so questions from the committee? Right, okay, councillor Bellbin, I'll take you first.
Thank you Chair, and yes, totally agree, it's great to see the improvements that are in there. I had a general question around the reports as a whole, and how we do demonstrate the direction of travel overall. Obviously, we've got comparisons to 2324, but, I mean, I was last on this committee a couple of years ago, and without going back to it, but it'd be good to have a, perhaps not in every quarter, but unless there's a way to show that easily, but at least annually, to look at the overall direction of travel kind of on the longer trajectory and not just compared to the previous year. And also, in terms of our targets, it'd be really good to understand and be able to see that we are getting more ambitious in our targets, because some of them, I think, are relatively low, and that probably reflects where we've been as a council, and we want to make steady improvement, but it would be good to see that our ambitions are growing as we make those improvements and understanding that over a slightly longer timescale. I had a couple of specific questions as well on specific parts of the report, one of which was the waiting times for customers calling the contact centre, so on page 72, there's some tables there around that, that seem to show that waiting times grew, grew substantially in quarters three and four, for both housing customers and repairs customers, and I wondered what lay behind that. And also, that the percentage of housing calls answered dropped over the same two quarters, so it'd be good to understand a bit more what lies behind that. And the other question I have was around the complaints. We've seen a decrease in the number of stage one complaints, but an increase in the number of stage two complaints, and is there some correlation there, the fact that we're turning around stage one complaints quicker? But does that mean that perhaps we're not doing it to tenant satisfaction, and that's what's led to the increase in stage two complaints? Is there any correlation between those, and have we done any investigation into that? Thanks.
Thanks, all good points, James, can you address some of those?
Thank you, so I'll take them in order, councillor Bellbin. Firstly, on how we demonstrate direction of travel over along the time period, absolutely we'll take that on board. The one caveat is, some of these measures are, were only, were only created last year, so we'll do it where we can. I think particularly on the perception survey measures, it will be hard to find a comparable measure that goes beyond last year. We would have done our own local surveys, I believe, but they would have asked different questions, but we will definitely take that on board. Similarly, with targets, I'm certainly really ambitious for the service, and in some areas we're now achieving kind of median performance against our peer group, and therefore we should be aiming higher than that, we should be aiming for upper quartile. To be honest, in some areas, we're still not at that stage, voids is a good example, we've had brilliant progress on voids, but I want to see us work a lot harder to get to at least average performance, and then we can start looking at further increases. All of that will be picked up as part of the new performance framework that I, that I mentioned earlier on, councillor Bellbin. On the contact centre, I'll be honest, I don't, I've not crossed a detail on that, and I'm happy to commit to come back to the committee with a, with a detailed update. What I do know is there would be longstanding issues in terms of call wait time and, and unanswered calls in the contact centre across all services. A key part of the Future Sheffield Programme the council was leading is to drive digital shift, and that's one thing that's noticeable about the housing service in Sheffield, that we are over relying compared to our peers on customers having to use the very traditional contact centre phone line to report what are often quite transactional things, like paying rent or reporting a basic repair. So there's a lot of work happening already in the council, and we need to emulate that in, in housing to support digital shift, as well as obviously increasing the performance position in the contact centre. And on stage one, the stage two complaints, the honest answer is, I don't know yet, we need to dig into this a bit. I think there's a few things going on, all landlords have partly in response to the housing ombudsman's reports, have moved to a more rigorous application of the housing ombudsman's complaints handling code, and that will mean that our tenants are more aware than they were previously of, of their ability to escalate to stage two, and indeed to escalate to the ombudsman. So I almost see that as a positive, colleagues, because it means that tenants understand their rights and are able to escalate if they feel like they're not getting a satisfactory answer at stage one. I think the other thing for me is that we've seen a reduction in stage ones, and a lot of stage ones will be repair related, and we think that reduction in stage one complaints reflects the reduction in the repairs backlog. So some of those more transactional complaints, I reported a repair, it hasn't happened, why not? We would expect those to reduce as our repairs backlog reduces, and that appears to be what's happening in the, in the stats.
Great, thanks very much. Just on councillor Bellbin's point about that longitudinal monitoring of results, I think now that we're getting to the point where we've got some longitudinal data building up since we started counting these new measures, it would be definitely good for the committee to see that and see the longer term trends. Okay, right, go to councillor Turpin.
Thanks. There's some good stuff in here, James, oh, and welcome to Sheffield City Council, I think this is your first housing policy committee meeting, isn't it? So good to have you here. Yeah, there's just a couple of things, so I, I do feel a little like I might be a bit mean to you here, seeing as this is your first meeting, but the, the couple of things I want to raise is the gas safety checks and the electrical safety checks. Now, we've been going over these for literally years, they haven't improved at all, the, the, the reasons we've been given for the last several years why we haven't managed to have a gas safety check on every home is getting access. I believe things have been done and, sort of, a strategy in order to gain access, but whatever has been done to try and do this, it clearly isn't working, and it is, you just can't underestimate how insanely dangerous this is, and also how much trouble Sheffield City Council got in over this. If one flat has a gas explosion in a block, that is taking out the rest of the block. It just, these tests have to be up to date within a year, all of them, and you can see that, target 100%, and it's not, it's not got above 99.5 is the highest on this chart. It just hasn't improved at all in three years. And the other thing with the electrical safety certificates is that, that when the, when the law changed whereby local authorities had to have a certificate that was less than five years old, we realised that, you know, the council hadn't been keeping up with them, and there was a massive backlog. But last year, we procured, I think, two businesses, could be wrong, but it was something like 20 million quid to get a, get private companies to bring the council's housing stock up to date in terms of electrical safety certificates, and that also hasn't improved whatsoever in the last year. So, those are two similar questions. Do you have a view?
Thank you councillor Turpin, I mean, essentially, I agree, it's unacceptable that we were out of compliance on, on electrical safety and gas safety for the reasons you described. I think they're quite different things though, in terms of the council's performance on gas, at one point, we were in a, a really significantly poor position, as in hundreds, I believe thousands of overdue gas safety checks. We're in a much improved position now, 215, which is not acceptable, but it is a much improved position compared to where the council was. I'm confident based on the work I've done in the first kind of eight weeks and what I've seen happening, that we're now running a really tight ship in terms of the actual gas safety process and the three checks with households before we then proceed to legal process. The issues we've got is some of those gas safety checks are very old, as in they haven't been done for many years, so the access issues are significant because it hasn't been the engagement with the tenant, so they, they take a long time to overcome. We are now in a position where we haven't got any overdue gas safety properties that are overdue by more than a year, which is a significant improvement to where we were, where we had some that were overdue for two or three years, and we are expecting that number to, to continue to come down over the next kind of six to 12 months. On electrical safety, you're right, we do have a significant programme in place and contracts have been awarded, they're currently being implemented, firstly, to tackle the properties that haven't had an electrical check for more than 10 years, and we are aiming to get there very soon, and then by 2027, to get into compliance on a five year cycle, so that work is happening. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I know that we are cracking through those kind of hundreds, thousands at a time, so again, I'm happy to share that information with the committee. I suppose a general point I'd make is clearly there have been issues in the past at the council around staying on top of some of these really fundamental health and safety requirements, and that's why we're in detailed conversations that are ongoing with the regulator, following the self referral, following the regulatory judgement about gas safety. We are working hard to demonstrate to them that we have changed our approach, that we've changed our culture, and that this is a really important and central part of what the council does.
Yeah, make it fairly brief, but yeah.
Sure, so, so, James, with the, if there's the homes that don't have an up to date gas safety certificate, if there is a problem that is preventing us from getting into those homes to do the testing, and that is a, that problem is not going to go away, I just wonder if we can remove gas from those properties and, you know, give them an electric hob, give them an air source heat pump, and that would really, you know, that... heat pump and that would really, you know, that basically means those homes no longer need to be tested for gas safety every year.
It's an interesting suggestion. I would suggest that the same reasons we struggle to gain access to do a gas safety check, which is a fairly quick thing to do, we'd face the same issues if we wanted to get in and do something more intrusive such as replacing a gas supply with an alternative source of heating or hot water. I think the other thing I reflect on from just from experience is often these are households where there's an underlying vulnerability, there might be kind of severe poverty, it's really important that we don't get to a position where they don't have access, particularly in the winter months, to a gas supply because clearly that's really important for health and wellbeing. The main issue and all landlords face this councillor Turpin is the legal powers available to the council to force access are quite clunky, to be honest, and that kind of builds in a certain amount of time that we have to take in order to kind of get a case from our repair service through to the legal service and then to get a warrant to secure access and do the gas safety check. But I'm happy, Chair, if colleagues would appreciate this, we can do a specific update on gas safety and electrical safety, given it is a really serious issue and it's something that I know there's been discussions about in the past. Happy to do that.
Thanks. I think it is a really important point, as you say, it's not acceptable that there's some worth seeing of these very long outstanding gas repairs, sorry, gas service checks, not repairs. I think probably we should take it through a knowledge briefing just for an update, but I just want to reflect on the fact of the work that has been done since the regulator previously issued a notice in respect of that one issue about those critical gas safety checks, but including through this committee where, and of course, there has been a new policy brought in about the council's access to properties and there's been the change in the tenancy conditions to enable that further, so that I think it's fair to say that we're now looking at a number of those very long-term entrenched issues where, and again, going back to what we briefed on by our staff, it is people who have a multitude of issues, whether it's hoarding, mental health issues, extreme reclusiveness or whatever. But yeah, an update on that would be good as one of our informal briefings. Good point though, good to councillor Dwyer for the next question.
Yes, thank you. I'll keep it brief. So you talk about using data to affect decision, inform decision-making, could you go into a bit of detail about how that works? How are we using this information we're getting from our tenants to then focus resources?
Thank you. I mean, I think there's lots of ways, to be honest councillor Dwyer, we can expand on this when we come back with the new performance framework for this year. For some examples, complaints handling is a really classic and obvious one of where we clearly need to focus because tenants are not happy at the moment with our complaints handling process. Looking back, the one I would pull out in particular is the Satisfaction with Neighborhoods measure, which last year I think we were all disappointed with in terms of tenant satisfaction. This year, sorry, for the course of 24/25, a significant amount of work happened across the service and particularly focused on shared and communal areas, which we'd heard from our tenants both through the survey but also through things like local area committees was something they really cared about and wanted to see some improvements. We have trialled various things, including more intensive, things like more intensive cleaning and caretaking, rotors and schedules on some of our estates and along with some other measures that we tried on neighbourhoods and that appears to be feeding through into our satisfaction as well as on the ground, just kind of informally, we've heard from tenants, from LAX and also from elected members that that's really positive. More broadly, I think one of the development areas for the council is to use the information on things like repairs and compliance to support a more intelligent asset management strategy and that's a really key objective for me and I think for the committee over the next 12 months and you alluded to it as well councillor Norris. We need to move to a position where we're using information particularly on repairs, so where are repairs happening, how much are they costing, to guide our capital investment decisions and that's obviously important for our customers, but it's also important for the long-term sustainability of the housing revenue account.
Thank you very much. I'd answer your questions, good to councillor McGowan.
Thank you. I should be on a quick one, but it's about the fire risk assessment compliance and you say that there's 82 low-rise blocks that have been delayed and that it should be done by end of June. I just wonder, are we on track for that?
Yes, they've all been done.
That's a good answered question, they've been done, excellent, all right. Councillor Baker.
Thank you, Chair. Going back to the gas and the electric safety checks, I'm presuming that some of the people who we can't get access for the gas checks are the same people we can't get access for the electric checks. And so consequently, we're talking about household with some complicated, complex needs. What we're doing to help and support those households going forward to make sure that every time we go around, we don't end up in court again. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Baker. I'm also assuming that, but it is just an assumption at this stage and I think therein lies the issue. So we have access issues across all work streams, as does every landlord, it's not just Sheffield that has this issue. It would make sense intuitively, wouldn't it, that it's the same households, but at the moment we're not using the data in a way that allows us to conclusively say it is a handful of households and here is the strategy and that's what we need to work on during the course of this year. I think there's a related issue councillor Baker about how we run our no-access procedures, so currently they're run within each service area, so electrical safety, gas safety, repairs, hazards. We are looking at whether there is an argument to say that putting that into one place or at least standardising processes across all work streams would deliver some efficiencies.
Thanks, yeah.
Not just for the council but for the tenants as well.
Thanks very much. Good. Councillor Norris.
You mentioned repairs backlog. Last year, there was an estimate that the repairs backlog would be cleared by June this year. It sounds like that isn't the case and I wondered how far we've got, when we are expecting to clear it by and a broader question really about, you know, things like this, things like getting the void target down to close to 40, which is where we want it to be, is like tracking over time. It's like knowing what deadlines we're aiming for, it would be really helpful in terms of our role to scrutinise and monitor.
Happy to take that away and I think it's probably linked to the prior comment from councillor Belbin around looking back further. I think it'd be helpful for the committee to see what our targets are for reducing some of those historic backlogs. We're not there yet on the repairs backlog, but I think it's reduced from something like over 30,000 repairs to over 10,000 repairs, so still a significant backlog but a significant reduction. For some work streams such as working at heights, the backlog has basically disappeared now. The key ones that remain are some of the really complex longstanding disrepair and dampen mould cases. We're doing a focused piece of work at the moment on dealing with that backlog prior to the introduction of ALB's law in the autumn, when we can expect to see a higher number of referrals made to the council.
One more, yeah?
Yeah, just going back to the complaints and the delay in stage-two, I just wondered how that links to compensation because we were having a problem with paying out relatively high amounts in relation to court cases and I wonder what, how the positions moved on that, has that improved?
I don't have information in front of me today on the amount we've actually paid. I would make the distinction though between the complaints process and compensation we might offer under the complaints process versus the disrepair process where there is a kind of statutory framework for compensation, they're quite different things, but happy to come back to the committee with some further detail on what's happened since the committee agreed the new compensation policy.
Thanks, that's always a topical issue and as I understand, our disrepair claims are going down, but also it's worth noting, I think councillor Norris, that there isn't actually a huge amount that's paid out in compensation and I'm also just going to say of that tenants don't get very much of it, tends to go to the solicitors and the claims farmers in particular. However, that's a particular bugbear of tenants who've been through that process. Right, okay, thank you councillor Norris. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, coming on page 51, under the Management Information Scores, category NM01 talks about the antisocial behaviour cases opened per thousand homes, so I'm reading that those are new cases within the year, which has gone just over six, almost seven, which in itself is slightly worrying, but I would be very interested, do we have similar statistics for the number of cases that are still open and the number of cases that have actually been resolved?
We will definitely have that councillor Williams, I don't have it in front of me today, but we will, but we will have it. I should also add on antisocial behaviour, we are deliberately not setting ourselves a target on both that measure but also the number of ASP cases involving hate incidents and that's because we obviously don't want to get into a position where we're creating incentives that mean we don't want them reported, if that makes sense. So we can compare ourselves to others with this data and we can also provide that information, but we were not planning to set a target on that, on that measure.
Thanks very much. I think at some point we can look forward to more information on that. It's a bit like crime reporting to the police, isn't it, where an increase in the figures might mean there's more crime or it might mean that there's just more awareness and more reporting, even if in fact there's less crime, or both of those. So, yeah.
It's just if I may, if you're a victim of antisocial behaviour, you just can't enjoy your life, can you? That's the basis of it.
Absolutely, it's a really important point to make and so, yeah, it's one that we should keep an eye on. Great, okay. Any other questions from anyone? No, right, well I'll just, in that case, first of all, thanks very much for that really clear set of answers to your presentation, James. Secondly, apology for not introducing and welcoming you as the new Director of Housing. It seems already that you've been around dealing with us for far too long, but in fact, yes, this is your first formal meeting of the Housing Committee since you actually started. So, yeah, welcome properly and, yeah, again, thank you very much. May this continue. If I can direct members to page 34, you'll find the recommendations, essentially it's note this, so one is to note the TSM performance scores as set out in the appendix, which of course will be submitted to the regulator, and then two is to note the housing repairs performance update for quarter four, which we've also had there. And item three can be deleted off the formal recommendation because we've already highlighted the areas we've done that one. So for recommendations one and two, are people happy to approve those? Nods all round, so I'll take that as a unanimous approval there. Thank you very much, it's a really important part of the work and so we'll move on to the next item. So if other members of staff want to come up to the hot desk if you like, we're going to look at item nine and that's the temporary accommodation strategy and the temporary accommodation policy. So if you'd just like to get yourselves settled and if you have name cards, that's great to pop those up and then when you're ready, do you want to put the mic on, introduce yourselves for the record for the webcast and then we'll hand over to your partner to report.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Allen, I'm Head of Citywide Housing Services.
And I'm Fiona Wayne and I'm Assistant Manager in the Strategic Housing Team.
Thanks. Are you happy to just go through your reports, which we'll find at page 79?
So today we're presenting Sheffield's first temporary accommodation strategy and policy. These are essential documents to provide a clear and proactive five-year vision for improving the way we deliver and manage temporary accommodation. Without these frameworks, we've been operating reactively in the face of rising need and increasing cost pressures. The strategy supports our broader homelessness prevention and rough sleeping strategies and sets out how we will end the use of bed and breakfasts within two years, reduce placements overall and ensure temporary accommodation is safe, suitable and cost-effective. The accompanying policy sets out how temporary accommodation will be allocated and managed and together they give clarity to staff, partners, residents and a fair transparent basis for decision-making. We carried out in-depth consultation, including interviews and compensations with people with lived experience and people currently living in our temporary accommodation. These showed strong overall support for the direction and proposals set out in both the strategy and the policy. We believe these documents provide a much-needed framework to improve outcomes for households facing homelessness and we recommend that the committee endorse us both the strategy and the policy today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a nice concise introduction to something that's been around this committee previously and through quite a few of our knowledge briefings and with quite a substantial consultation with tenants, which is why there's quite a large pack of papers here. So if people want to wade through the appendices, they're the consultation reports, they're all in the public domain. So looking for any questions on this or is it something that's now straightforward? It's not, so we've got our new members, as our substitute member councillor McGowan, would you like to ask the first question?
Yeah, it's just about how do we mitigate about people making themselves intentionally homeless and going in? You know, there's always rumours about if you, you know, if you say your parents have thrown you out or something, you'll get a carefree house or they'll find you somewhere. How do we mitigate against that?
Suzanne, if you could answer that, yes.
Yeah, okay, so as you're all aware, people are able to make homeless applications and if we become aware that someone's at risk of homelessness or they are indeed homeless, we have a duty as a council to investigate that and we do have a process that we need to follow. We have to make a reasonable decision in every case and that is what we do and give people a fair opportunity to explain to us what's happened. We look at that and we do look at evidence that supports their case so we can make the right decision. So, but at the point that we allocate temporary accommodation, it's a very low threshold. All we need to know is that we've got reason to believe that someone is eligible for assistance from us, they may be in priority need and they may be homeless, so it isn't the complete investigation at that point and we work with them and anyone else who's working with them over a period of time. There are, and I think you've illustrated, there are stories and ideas and anecdotal information about what will get to you, housing, because we know there is such a severe shortage of housing in the city, but we do work very thoroughly with people and what we're trying to do is make sure that we do improve that so that we give people the right help and that we don't give people the impression that if they take certain actions, that will lead to an outcome that they necessarily require. I think it is really important in the context of such a shortage of housing that we are very clear with people what their own particular options are and I would also just draw attention to the fact that we, if people are indeed homeless, we might well also offer them private rented accommodation that is of a good quality, so it won't necessarily mean that they end that journey with us, living in council housing.
Thanks, happy for that, yeah. Intentional homelessness, as it's called, is always one of those politically fraught things worth just bearing in mind. People might be in housing need, but they very rarely make themselves homeless intentionally because being homeless is really not a very good thing for you, it's a pretty grim experience. Okay, councillor Dwyer, did you integrate, because I'll bring you in as a newer member too.
Yeah, thank you. Firstly, so I'm quite new to the committee and new to the council even, so I was surprised when you said we haven't had a temporary housing, a temporary accommodation strategy because I know that it's talking about case law from 2015, so it's probably been a live issue predate in the last few years where there's been a big increase, so I was a bit surprised by that. On a couple of points, it's talking about workforce development and addressing some of the challenges and investing in the workforce, which is positive, but it was, where is this, that budget coming from? Is it existing staffing budgets, filling vacancies that I know are quite high in housing or redirecting resources or is it a budget increase line? And then it was on the mix of council housing, supported housing providers and private rented sector, do you have an idea of yet what percentage of each area you'd be looking at to solve the problems of Airbnb's?
Okay, so really good questions councillor Dwyer and I'll try and answer them and also happy to have other conversations where that's helpful to newer members of the committee to improve information that everyone's got. So just on, in terms of having a temporary accommodation strategy, we're not required to have one, but we are required to have a homelessness prevention strategy and we do have one, but what we've found is because of the increase in demand and the pressures that we've got, we also need to focus particular attention on temporary accommodation, we can't just deal with it under that broader umbrella. So it's pertinent and also that's why we also need to make sure we've got a very fair policy because the increase in numbers. So in terms of how we resource the improvements around staffing, firstly I'd say it's not all about housing staff, that people in complex needs need support from across the system and services, so some of them are council services and some of them are the other partners that we work with and that is part of the overall improvement, but you're correct that what we are- But you're correct that what we are doing and proposing to do even more of is to prioritise resources that we have already to focus more on prevention. But when people do indeed need rehousing, and legitimately people do at times where we cannot prevent homelessness for them, we will make sure we've got the right support in to make sure their time in temporary accommodation is as short as possible, which we call rapid rehousing, and that they can then move on to the correct offer for them. Sometimes that's returning home, sometimes that will be going into general needs housing, and at other times it may widely be supported housing because of their needs. But as well as looking at our existing resources, we've also had an increase in the Homeless Prevention Grant that some of you will have been aware of a big announcement about, and what we intend to do is use some of that to particularly improve the core housing offer that we deliver statutory homeless services, to make sure all of our staff are equipped correctly to give the advice that they need to give people with the skills that they need, because as this committee has recognised previously, it's a really difficult job, and people do that job to the best of their ability in very difficult circumstances. The other side of that is making that investment will both improve the experience of customers and their outcomes, but also the financial position of the council, because it is referenced here that we do have a financial pressure, significant one, it was six point two million last year, from using bed and breakfast accommodation, which is wholly inappropriate for people in housing need. So as well as that budget pressure, we will be looking at where we do need to provide housing for people, more appropriate resource.
Thanks, yeah. Good questions, I'll answer that. Yeah, great, thank you very much. Right, go to the side councillor Turpin next.
Thanks. Thanks very much for presenting the policy. I think it's very good. I was just reminded of something when councillor McGowan was asking about people making themselves homeless, and actually councillor Dwyer as well. I have had two pieces of casework for constituents who have been in a little bit of trouble with their housing. There was one, there was one person, it was a single parent, and their private landlord put their rent up by about thirty percent, then they couldn't afford it, and they went into Howden House to ask for help, and the staff's attitude was, well, my landlord put my rent up as well. And then their solution to help this woman out was to tell her, make yourself homeless and come back and we can help you. So it's not just rumours or anecdotes of people trying to game the system, our own frontline staff are telling people to go and do it, you know? So how can we ensure that the officers who are doing the actual work are doing it in a way that is best for the residents and also follows this policy? Because you know, there's no point having an excellent policy if it's not being delivered well.
So thank you for bringing that to my attention. I would firstly say, if there are any individual cases of concern, do not hesitate to make me aware of them, and I will look into them. If my staff have given that advice that you've described from coming into Howden, that's just completely incorrect. So I'll say that isn't the right advice to give. The Homes Reduction Act requires us to prevent homelessness, so if someone comes along and says, my landlord has put up my rent and I'm not able to afford it, our first reaction is, what can we do to help you stay there? If we can't help you stay there, and we will work directly with your landlord, one of the schemes we run is Call Before You Serve, where we work directly with landlords as well as with the tenants to say, what can we do to sort this out? And we try and do that. So can we do anything to help you? And there might be many reasons why people can't afford their home. Can we help you stay there? Can we negotiate with your landlord directly? And absolutely make sure if you do need to leave your home, you've been given the correct notice if we cannot prevent that. If we can't help you stay where you are, we don't say, and we shouldn't be saying, sorry, you've just explained a position where that was said, come back when you're homeless, because that means we let that person down, but we've completely missed the window for prevention as well. So that person might well, if they're owed temporary accommodation duty, experience more distress than they need to at what would be a very difficult time. So I can only apologise to anyone where that has happened. To make sure it doesn't happen in future, what we will be doing, and we've already started, is a more comprehensive package of training and induction for our staff, a quality framework within which they do their work so that everybody knows how to do their job and the standard to which they do it, and they are supported to do that, which we've acknowledged is a very difficult role, and it does require a lot of skill and knowledge, and that the people who supervise that work, who manage it, are similarly equipped to do that, so that you've got robust arrangements right down the structure. I appreciate, and I think it's been acknowledged in the independent review that we've had, that caseloads have been too high in the service, which does mean that sometimes people are not able to perform in the way that we would like them to, and I don't point the finger at any individual staff for that, that's a systemic failing, but we're going to put that right. The other thing I would say, there has been quite high turnover in staff, and again, by ensuring we've got really good career pathways, robust training, development, acknowledging these staff as housing professionals, we hope that will make sure people see their career with us. Many people have worked for a very long time in the services, and we want to make sure that is acknowledged and rewarded.
Thanks, that's a really important point to address there. Councillor, okay, good, all right. Councillor Bellbin, did you have something to say first?
Thank you. I think it's, you know, that last point really demonstrates why we need this policy, doesn't it? We need the strategy and we need the policy, because unless we're a hundred percent clear on who is entitled to temporary accommodation and how we go about offering it, then, you know, we're on the, we're not going to do well with this, and we will end up, you know, making decisions that don't meet probably statutory duties but also our own needs. And I think it's really important to situate this in that kind of wider context that this, the shortage of temporary accommodation and the factors that are driving people into temporary accommodation, I think are dealt with not just through this policy, but through much wider things that we're doing as a council and indeed national initiatives as well, and that includes a local plan and, you know, and the fact that we need to build more houses, we need to increase the supply of housing. It includes the allocations policy that we will be coming to look at at our next meeting. All those things are really key factors in making sure that this works, and just looking at the policy in isolation, if you like, doesn't tell the whole story in lots of ways. Again, the impacts of temporary accommodation on people, I think when we're looking at, you know, families or people fleeing domestic violence, having to live in BnBs, it's absolutely not where we want people to be, and we need to make sure that where people, there will always be instances unfortunately where people will have a need for temporary accommodation, but it needs to be as short a period as possible and that people are housed more suitably as soon as possible. Again, so I think it's really good that the policy and strategy is in place and that it has been really well informed, I think, by the lived experience, and really, it's really good to see the amount of consultation that's taken place and the detail on the consultation around that. And the other driver, I think we've got to be really honest about this, is that this is creating huge costs for the council, it's one of our main overspends as a council, and we, that's something we absolutely have to address as well, both by being clear about who is entitled, but making sure that we are not spending huge amounts of money on BnBs and so on. And again, I think the targets within the strategy to reduce that spend are, you know, very, very, very welcome and I think realistic, and it's great to see us moving it into that far more proactive space instead of, as you outlined at the beginning, being very, very reactive. I just wondered if you could say a little bit more, I appreciate you've not gone into detail in this strategy because it sits in other strategies around homelessness, but about the work we're doing on prevention and early intervention. So you mentioned there around, you know, when someone presents as homeless, we do work with them first of all to check, are you homeless, and is there other ways that we can support it? But even ahead of that, are we doing anything or starting to think about, how can we look at really early indicators of people who may have found themselves in this kind of situation? Because I think there is data, there is, that can support that, and can we start to work with people before they're even presenting as homeless? So just as an example of that, I know roundabout, for example, I've got a project where they're going into schools and talking to young people around, you know, if these kinds of situations arise and starting to advise people really early on, and we will have that kind of data about different cohorts of people who potentially find themselves in this situation. So it'd just be good to hear a little bit more about how we're addressing that. Thank you.
I think the focus on prevention is absolutely critical, and you're right, we and other partners are doing work in that area. So in the council, we do have a project where we're looking at what our data tells us, where we can identify earlier risks through our own information. But we're also working in partnership, and one of the pieces of work you've referred to is actually been put together through Homewood, through the work that we've done with the Royal Foundation, and that is going into schools as the delivery organisation is roundabout, one of our great young people services in the city. So they have been interviewing in three, they're doing it in three schools, they've done two, I saw them yesterday, I think they've got another one to do. And then all of that information will be evaluated. The questionnaire they're using has been designed by Cardiff University, by their expertise on home to prevention. So their professor there is on the National Board for the Homewood Project, which is Sheffield's one of the six locations. So that's, that is about finding families who might be at risk through talking to school pupils. But the other work we're doing as well is in locations, and I think, you know, you've referred to this about, we know about people, or partners know about people who've got housing worry and who are at risk. So what we will be doing, as well as across the city, what we're intending to do is target early prevention work in communities at highest risk of homelessness, and we've got three market, housing market areas which have got the most homeless applications and the poorest outcomes for people. And that means finding the touch points where people are known, it might be school, it might be anywhere really in the community, because I think one of the challenges is that people don't see homelessness, they don't see themselves as being threatened with it. And I think we need to change the language really, have you got housing worry, or someone you know has got housing worry? So there is lots of work going on as well as the work that's described here. The prevention strategy's got a whole action plan associated with it, and I think one of the main things is that we know about people when they come and see us, and it's a lot of other people and organisations do know about people earlier. So one of the key routes in is due to refer, where the statutory agencies have to tell us about people at risk. The other thing we're linked to is the early help work across the council, where we've got families who are at risk and have got concerns from a very early age, and we are working closely with colleges and social care as well on the earlier help and intervention. But the other part of that, as you all know, is about people, adults with more complex requirements, who've gone through homelessness many times, and you'd all be aware, we've had reports before about Changing Futures Programme, and what that's told us about how we can support people who we know are going to have more difficulty resolving their housing need, and that housing's often a presenting issue for them. So we need to work with them to work out what works for them. Do you want to add anything else, James?
Yes, I was going to bring in Director of Housing.
Just one thing to add to that excellent summary, which is, I think there's an important link here to the community strategy which is being developed at the moment, councillor Bellbin, as you're aware, which I think will go to S and R Committee, it's a tier-one strategy. There's something for me around, I guess, a reflection that there'll be many organisations in your wards that would never think of themselves as homelessness organisations, or probably wouldn't use the language of homelessness prevention, but are really critical to community resilience. And really homelessness is when people reach a crisis point, and the more we can strengthen that resilience in communities, the better our homelessness prevention kind of system will work before it hits any of our agencies, any of our statutory agencies. So I think one of the things that Homewood is helping us to, I think, spend more time on and create the headspace to think about is that kind of, I guess, that question of how do we reimagine what homelessness prevention looks like in the city? And also, I think, give the credit to the organisations who are doing brilliant work but who are not kind of formally part of our commission services or part of the homelessness system.
Thanks, that would be, obviously, homelessness prevention is a big topic, but councillor Bellbin, do you want to come back?
It's just a really quick follow-up on that. I know, looking at some other cities, Manchester, for example, has set up a homelessness partnership that is, you know, made up of that, more of that ecosystem, and I think that's a helpful approach that starts to feel as if this isn't, homelessness isn't just, the council deals with that bit of it, and I think that's a useful direction to go in.
Something to come back to and, you know, sort of keep awareness of, okay. Councillor Baker, will you come in?
I just wanted to, through your chair, thank Suzanne and her staff, who are doing a lot of work within their everyday role, but the extra support they're giving to Homewood. I've been at meetings and seen the effort that they've put into prior to those meetings, and the conversations they are having with partners, as councillor Bell quite clearly said, spot on right, are making a difference, and it makes a difference in our city. People recognise that Sheffield is one of the cities that's working really hard to prevent homelessness and deal with it once it happens, and it's thanks to you and the people who work with you that we've got that reputation, and through your chair, I'd like to thank you.
Thanks, yes, I'm sure that's something that we could all endorse, isn't it? Yeah, there's a lot of work that goes on the team and it's quite difficult stuff. So, yeah, in particular that. Okay, councillor Williams, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Clearly a massive piece of work. My concern potentially, and not necessarily for this organisation, but I've seen it in others, is that when a piece of work like this gets done, it's put in a drawer, and in four and a half years' time, it's said, oh, that five-year strategy is coming to an end, we'd better have a look at it. I guess my question, it's slightly rhetorical, because I hope I know the answer, is, are you happy that you've got the right mechanics in place, that you can monitor it, that you're happy that the policy and the strategies are working, that you have the flexibility to make tweaks as necessary? And if the answer is yes, and I hope it is, probably will be, is there a mechanic for that to come back and be reported to this committee so that we get, so we can live and breathe the next five years?
Two aspects to that, and thank you for your question, which I think is excellent. You're correct that there are times when strategies sit in drawers, don't they, and the action plan, and, as I say, I've got big drawers full of papers, you know, that down the years have accumulated with all good intention. I think what's difficult is with the volume of competing priorities that we have. So we've got our city goals, haven't we, and our council plan, and there's a massive agenda and lots of need. I do feel particularly assured that there is the most high-level support as well as the lower-level support for really tackling homelessness and temporary accommodation in the city. I've also spoken to our government advisers and gone through with them what we are proposing, and they've assured me that what we have set out is in line with the national direction of travel, that temporary accommodation, BnBs, isn't good enough and that cannot continue, as well as that wider context of affordable housing. However, it's for us at a local level to deliver, and I am confident that because we've put such a spotlight on housing homelessness through our Future Sheffield work of identifying that we really do need to improve our housing offer, and great efforts have been made around that already, and there are more to come, this is getting the focus. And I think the important part of that is, it isn't being seen only as housing, it absolutely has been owned across our partnerships and our organisation internally. So the mechanics of that, in terms of what we're doing internally, we do have a Homeless Improvement Board that is overseeing how we implement all of this work. The sponsor of that work is James Clark, the new director, who we know is new, although he feels like he's been here for eight weeks, or more. And we, in terms of reporting to you politically, what I would intend is, because we bring an annual review of the Homes Prevention Strategy and Action Plan, that we combine that update with that one, that is due to come in with that one that is due to come in, in, within the autumn, so that you get a comprehensive feedback to you. And if there are any particular initiatives or issues, we would raise that with you earlier in the year. Performance sits within our overall performance framework for the council, the bits that we are doing, so that goes up. And I'm frequently at the Performance and Delivery Board explaining what we're doing and getting the support from the wider leadership on it. Yeah, so I think, you know, the intentions are all there. And in terms of practical implementation, my officers are convening immediately following on from this, our Implementation Action Planning Group. So we make sure everyone knows what they're doing. And the engagement with partners that Fran mentioned is really important. We do have our Homes Prevention Partnership in the city, so we have a board of partners who work with us as well as our Prevention Forum. And because there is so much to do, and we're not the experts on everything, it is about recognising what they all do. So that might be services we commission or those that we don't, who say, I can do this either with you. One of the things I'll mention, it's really impressive at the moment, one of our partner organisations has been doing, going into schools and looking at tenancy ready with them. And a breakthrough thing that we've done recently, or they have done, is working at pupil referral units with young people who are at particular risk and have had experience of not being engaged correctly, so don't know about things that could help them in the future. So that's just one small example of the things that we're doing across the city. And as we know, we've got a massive network of really great partners who are delivering to us.
Thanks very much for that, yes, that's okay. Great, thanks. Council Norris?
Yeah, I really welcome this. And I, tying in with what other people have said, you know, you've got a stronger, you've mentioned in trauma informed support, you've got a much stronger emphasis on that overall ecosystem, you called it, didn't you, of support. I really appreciate you've got a lot of conflicting demands to manage. And one thing I wanted to flag up was provision of temporary accommodation, both our own, council owned, and what we might commission, because that's one thing I'm worried about, getting a bit lost in the mix, that needs long term work. You know, if we're going to build new or commission new, we've got to be working on it now and doing the business cases now. And I noted that in 11.3, it says we've been trying to replace the current schemes since 2017. So I appreciate it's really not an easy issue. But we mentioned, you mentioned, we need to develop an asset management strategy to ensure council owned temporary accommodation is fit for the future. And that, for me, that needs to be part of our overall asset management strategy. And it's two places where, you know, both the growth strategy that looks at what we might commission from other people as well, and our own asset management strategy, what we might deliver. And I really welcome it says, you know, temporary accommodation in parallel with supported accommodation, because there's a lot of overlap. But I just, I suppose I felt, I was a bit worried in the, in the high level action plan, that maybe there wasn't enough about keeping that on track.
Yeah, no, absolutely correct. It's been an intention of the council for many years to, it was at that time, replace provision, because it wasn't fit for purpose. And that is still the intention at the moment, we need more of it, not just different. But what we'll, what you'll see through the strategy, because of our intentions around prevention, we think we will use more of our own stock for a short period, for a couple of years. And then we'll be able to reduce the overall numbers by making sure we've got the right housing options for people, either prevention or supported housing. So it all sits together, it isn't one thing at a time. And we will be addressing the need for new purpose built or other new provision that we acquire or commission through a detailed piece of work. So that's, that's already there. As you'll be aware, we did have temporary accommodation in our SIP previously, in our Stock Increase Programme as council. Because of increased costs across the board, we, as you know, we've not been able to do everything we wanted to. So we're looking at how we will deliver a temporary accommodation and all of these things fit together. We have said we were prioritising family accommodation. And the reason for that is, A, because of those, you know, those absolute duties we've got to children and their families, and the impact on them of being in unsuitable housing. But also, we believe that's a more stable group to plan for, because as, as we know from the independent review, the recommendation is that we need to work to make sure we are providing temporary accommodation to single people where we have that duty. We might still be giving people other advice, but there was a finding that we might be putting people into temporary accommodation who didn't require it. So we need to make sure we understand the need correctly and also that we utilise the housing that we do commission, supported housing from those great partners, to make sure it is going to the people who would otherwise be, or we identify would be owed duties to housing through the council. Again, it's the whole move on as well, because we do have issues about where people then move to. So it, nothing's in isolation, but you do need to put the spotlight on certain things to make sure they get the attention or they just don't. So, so, so in terms of the asset management, you're right, where we're looking at our own, the asset management strategy overall will include the review of temporary accommodation and other specialist housing that we provide, because they do relate to each other.
Thank you very much, okay. I think finally we've got a short question from Council McGowan.
I didn't say it was short, no I didn't. It was just coming back, it's really made me think about the prevention side that everybody was talking about. And that is a really difficult area to monitor or to, to see what's worked, because when you start talking about community groups, it made me think, in my ward, I've got S12 Community Pantry, the, you know, you think, give food out, but you don't link then that that's probably stopping them being homeless. And how you measure that? And, you know, people just think the short term, they're getting food, that's making sure that people are fed. But by that, that's probably helping them to get, pay the rent and stay where they are. And it's how do you measure that? You know, and how we thank those organisations, because that's the bit that they'll not see, they'll probably see themselves of how they're supporting us. So it was just something that just made me think, realise the longer issues.
Thanks, I mean, I think it's more of a comment than a question, but it's a good comment because it reflects the broad breadth and depth of what goes on in the community there. Okay, are we all okay with questions? So let's go to the recommendations, which you find on page 80. I mean, I just want to say, of course, you know, this, this strategy is bringing together that huge amount of work that's been described with the focus that's needed there. And if it succeeds, it should be obviously better for the people who have to go through the threat of homelessness, natural homelessness, far better for our staff who have to deal with that, to have been firefighting under very difficult circumstances and address the ballooning bill for temporary accommodation. So there's everything to play for there and hopefully this will make that inroad into it, and it's that focus that we talked about there. So essentially, we're being asked to, well, we have considered, but to approve, one, approve the temporary accommodation strategy, and secondly, to approve the temporary accommodation policy as set out in the appendices. Do I take it everyone's happy with that? Nods, so yes, unanimous support for that. Thank you very much. Yeah, huge amount of work there. So, yeah, we will, we will, of course, as people reflect here today, need to monitor that over the course of the year. Shall we move on to the final item on the older person's living strategy? So, have I got that right? Yes, older person's housing strategy, yeah. Take it people are living already. The older person's housing strategy. Suzanne, you're thinking on this. Ruthie, if you want to come up, would you like to introduce yourself so far? And then maybe open up to the reports that we'll find on page 251 and go from there.
Hello, yes, I'm Ruth Ward. I'm Assistant Manager within the Strategic Housing Service. And I'm here today to present the final draft of the Old People's Housing Strategy 2025 to 2030. So the Old People's Housing Strategy is a tier two strategy. And alongside of the tier two and three strategies will help to deliver the ambitions of Sheffield's overarching tier one housing strategy. So it covers all housing tenures and has the same five ambitions as the housing strategy. But it focuses on housing support and advice that facilitates independent living in later life, including neighbourhoods that enable older people to live safely, well and independently. It also recognises that older people are not one group and that people biologically age at different rates. So Sheffield has a growing and increasingly diverse older population and a significant shortage of aged brandy housing. So this strategy will help the council to meet its duties under the Housing Act, to assess the housing needs of our city and then plan strategically to meet them. Supporting independence in later life is a cross cutting priority for the council, including residents, including supporting residents to help themselves wherever this is possible. So this strategy will help to align approaches being taken across the housing, health, care and voluntary sectors, supporting collaborative working and delivering better housing and health outcomes for our older people. So in developing this strategy, it's been developed following an extensive two stage consultation, which showed strong support from residents and partners for the strategy's vision and priorities. So this version of the strategy presented today reflects the consultation feedback received, and you can find further details of that in the Form Two. So it's therefore recommended that the committee consider and approve the adoption of the new Old People's Housing Strategy.
Thanks very much. Anything to add Suzanne? Don't you, take it off.
No, I know, again, we've given you extensive papers and you did see the draft at the previous committee meeting, so we've reflected on the consultation outcomes in the final documents.
Thanks, yes. Again, it's something that committee members have been over quite a bit. We've had a previous report with the draft policy and there's quite a section on the extent of consultation at page 260 onwards. So that's it. So questions from this, good, Council McGowan again first of all.
Thank you. As I'm getting closer to this, this is, I just want to make sure that housing is fine for when I need it myself. I'm really passionate about.
Want to declare an interest, do you?
Yeah, I always said I love being on sheltered housing board when we had it, because I just always wanted to make sure it was okay for when I get there myself. I think, you know, I've worked with you before on issues, and it's specifically about our OPAL schemes. But I just wondered, in here, is it, you know, I've had an issue where I'm not, I'm not against people, people moving in with people, it's when they cause antisocial behaviour. So within our OPAL scheme, we had the case where a family, somebody lived in a one bedroom and moved someone else in and that extra person was causing antisocial behaviour. And I just wanted to know, in there, is there something written in there that stops that? Not stopping people coming to move in, but the antisocial behaviour elements that older people experience, especially in OPAL. I also wanted to, I have a concern about, you know, over the years, we used to have wardens on our schemes and we still have, but not in the way that we used to when they were first developed. And I know that causes, it still causes concerns for residents when they only have somebody there half a day. But also the cleaning, I was in one of my schemes the other, on Tuesday. And one of the things that got brought up there was, they're absolutely full of praise for the people and the staff that work there, but they don't get enough time to do the proper clean. And some of the residents were saying they're having to go around with antibacterial wipes and things. And it's not against the staff, it's against they don't have time. So it's about looking after, it's about making sure our own house is in order, if you know what I mean, before we start laying down for all the other organisations out there. And then some of our schemes are quite old. So I know I'm talking about our OPAL schemes, but have we got a programme of redevelopment? Or re, I know we're having a new scheme, but I'm thinking about, we've got three schemes in our ward. We've got two at the moment and a third one being developed. When the third one's being developed, it's going to be outstanding. That makes the old ones look really bad. And, you know, they've been built in 1950s and 60s and what's our scheme for getting those refurbished, is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Right, that's quite a mix of things that there, but so there's basically ASB and then cleaning and standards really. Just on the ASB, I mean, just want to focus on the, the particular issues around ASB that relate to older people, rather than the whole approach for ASB, which is right across the council.
Yeah, so thank you for that Karen. That wasn't one question, that was three, at least. Okay, so in terms of behaviours, absolutely, any antisocial behaviour should be dealt with. And my officers in the older people's independent living schemes that we directly provide, and we're the biggest provider of that type of housing in the city, so really proud of that, are equipped to deal with that. And if they cannot deal with it themselves, they can call on expertise from across the council to do that with them. So if there are any individual cases that are outstanding that I'm not aware of, then please do let me know. I know we've talked about some particular cases together. I think one of the issues there is that our current allocations policy allows for people to register for housing and bid, and bid for properties for over 60s, when some of their household members may not be over 60. And that's something we're consulting on in the allocations policy review. So that, that point has gone out for consultation. And then that issue will be reflected and addressed in the draft policy, which we referred to earlier, will be considered by an extraordinary meeting. However, there's also a requirement then to ensure that the tenancy conditions associated with specialist housing ensure that it's clear and explicit about who the home's for and who can live there and what agreement is needed if anyone else lives there who wasn't part of the household when they moved in. So that will address those issues, obviously subject to members' decision making around those issues. I think really what, what's happened at times is there has been, definitely there is a requirement in the city for intergenerational living, where people can live with people of different ages, they might care for someone, they might have a younger or older partner, they might look after grandchildren and so forth. Because of the lack of options, sometimes people have ended up living on a sheltered scheme with family members, where that isn't the right type of provision for them and therefore impacts on other residents. So you all know, we've got a great example at Buchanan Green, where we've got all age living, in that we've got our older people's scheme and we've also got a scheme for learning disabilities in the same place. And they can all enjoy the same amenities and facilities, but it's been designed for that purpose. So there is that, that. And you talked about, you mentioned new schemes, but also what are we doing about our existing schemes? I'm proud of all of them, but I do acknowledge that some of them are older, they're older stock. And they will be included in our asset management review and strategy, so that we have a plan and it would be subject to your agreement. What sort of landlord do we want to be? If we want to be a significant landlord for older people who need specialist housing, how are we going to invest in that provision? It isn't only us, we're encouraging other landlords to also come in, registered providers private, to provide for that shortfall of housing, so that there's choice in all areas. And in the strategy, we identify that some areas have got no specialist provision for older people and others have got more. In terms of any particular issues around cleaning, so forth in particular properties, please again, flag that to me if there's a particular scheme, so I can ensure the support is there. The quality standards are set out about how our stock should be looked after, if it hasn't been, and our staff need support or more time to do that, I can look at that with them. But overall, I think, and you did mention the resident wardens, we haven't had them for a very long time, but it is something that still gets fed back to me. And I would say, as a council at the moment, we can't afford to invest in that kind of model of provision. However, having any staff on site is still quite an achievement compared to what other providers do, where it's all remote, they don't actually have a dedicated team. Now, what we're doing again is making sure we can utilise other things as well as people. So in other meetings as well, you've probably talked about, not necessarily the Housing Policy Committee, but utilising technologies more, so we can help people to manage their own needs, but we can work with them remotely and not only in person. In person, people love it, and we do have a whole range of activity that goes on. Again, I would link it back to working with community groups and organisations. We have a lot of activities that happen in our schemes. And what we want to do is try and open them up to the wider community as well, so that all residents who might be lonely, vulnerable, can benefit from that wider network.
Thanks very much, yeah, good. Thanks very much. Yeah, good. Okay, councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Notwithstanding my comments about policies and draws, et cetera, I'm going to take that as given. I'm particularly pleased about, high up in the strategy, it talks about supporting older homeowners and private sector tenants, who potentially could be very, very vulnerable. And my concern is that, does the council have the resources? I think it's got the will, but has it got the resources to really do the right monitoring and support for these two categories? My concern is that they potentially could fall through the cracks. Can you reassure me, please?
Yeah, so obviously we have the private sector housing assistance policy. So that obviously helps to provide support for vulnerable homeowners and private renters, so we have got that in place. I think a lot of the strategy will be about focusing on enabling the people that can help themselves to help themselves, to then free up the resources to be able to support those homeowners and private tenants that are more vulnerable. So I think it's about thinking about the resource we've got and trying to use them most effectively, and targeting at those that the people need it most.
I'd just add to that, all housing is covered by regulation of some sort, isn't it? And part of what we do is both educate but enforce where we need to. And it's a challenge, it's a challenge, but we recognise, like you have done, that it's very often people in private, either owned or rented provision, that have some of the worst housing conditions. So we do have teams that work on that. Again, a lot of it is partnership work, and it isn't all going to be resolved by the council. So sometimes we're an enabler, sometimes we're directly involved in enforcing standards or educating people about them. But the other thing we do, and you've had reports here previously, we attract a lot of investment into the city. So we help people, for example, buy programmes to address energy efficiency, warm homes and so forth. So we're very often a catalyst, and we can be that as well in local areas, where we might be the landlord of a lot of the properties, but as you know, a lot of them have been bought. So we've got owners alongside our own tenants. So having an inclusive approach in a local community can help make sure that everyone can benefit. Private rented standards is a big issue in a city with a lot of old housing stock. Other things, you've had reports here before, Ruth talked about the private sector assistance policy, that governs disabled facilities grant, which, again, we've talked about as a critical thing for people to be able to live independently. So I think we've got a lot of ambition. So part of it is new homes, but as you've rightly said, a lot of it is existing homes. And over the, so this is a five-year strategy, making sure there's a good focus on understanding older people's housing needs and addressing those specific issues. A lot of the delivery will not happen within the next five years. We should do a lot of the foundational work, and a lot of it will be in our broader housing strategy, which must be inclusive of older people. And one of the things we're working on is where older people's housing can be, that might not necessarily be in council ownership. So again, Fran referenced a local plan earlier on, which are the essential enablers. There's a lot of discussion with private developers, investors, about how we can make what is already a really attractive city a really good place to build and invest in homes.
Happy with that? Right, okay. Councillor Turpin?
Thanks. Thanks very much for this. Hello, Ruth. Not seen you for ages. We spent a lot of time together a few years ago, didn't we? Yeah, I really like this strategy, and I think you can really feel people in it, which isn't always the case in the council. I particularly like how you've acknowledged specialist housing for Black, Asian, minoritised ethnic communities and LGBTQ+. I think that's really progressive, and really acknowledges how some cultures have changed as generations have moved on. And yeah, so I think that's really good. Now, having said that you can really feel people in this strategy, I actually want to ask you a little bit more about the money element of it. And it's kind of like, sets out an ambition of what we would like to do, but doesn't really say how it's going to be done. And there's not much in the section under, I've lost it, financial implications. And so I just wondered, is there money available in the council to, you know, build our own places? We know that obviously there was an OPAL site in my ward that's been dropped. And I was also thinking about some of the city's unoccupied heritage buildings, where there's a real deficit, where, you know, they're not being used, and they're not being funded, and they're falling into disrepair. And I was wondering if there's possibilities of maybe using those buildings for some of the services in this strategy. And that would be, you know, a way that we can preserve those buildings. And also then you've got our older people living in our older buildings. It sounds kind of like, nice and poetic and a little circular to me. So, yeah, I just wondered, what's the plan to do this, if that's something you can answer?
I think you or Ruth in, I think James would like to work too.
Yeah, I thought James might want to come in. But a lot of the issues around new build and investment will be delivered through the growth plan. So this is making sure that the requirements of older people are included in that growth plan and investment, that either we directly do ourselves, or we attract into the city and work with other delivery agents like registered housing providers and private developers and investors.
Yeah, I guess I was just going to reflect, councillor Turpin, that I'm really proud, and we should all be proud, that we're the largest provider in the city as the council of older person's independent living. That's not a, it's not a common thing that you see in local authority areas, and I'm really proud of it. Equally, I think the strategy acknowledges front and centre that this cannot be a council-only-delivered strategy because of the financial circumstances, but also not everyone wants to live in a council-run scheme. And one of the, I think, most consequential commitments in here in terms of funding and resources is the work around with adult social care on a market statement that gives a really clear steer to the many organisations that are already operating out there in providing specialist accommodation, about what our priorities are, what our needs are, and how we as a council can support them to invest in and deliver a good range and choice of accommodation appropriate for older people in the city, without the council necessarily funding that provision and running it. And that is not the same as me saying I want us to move away from directly provided accommodation at all. But clearly, it's not a need that we can meet solely through our own resources. I think there's also a link here to the asset management strategy. There will be choices for the council to make about where it directs its limited HRA capacity. And I would suggest that the urgent priority for the existing OPAL schemes is to ensure, and Suzanne's already alluded to this, that they're all of a good quality, and they meet a kind of basic state of good repair and compliance. And we need to make sure that's addressed. I've been to one of the best ones we've got, which is Buchanan Green. But I'm aware that not all of the estate is at that standard. And then there's a kind of separate set of questions, both for the asset management strategy and the growth plan, as Suzanne has said, around what's the council's appetite on stock increase? And if we want to do stock increases, is it focused on general needs council housing, or is it focused on specialist housing? So I think a lot of these questions will come down the track over the next kind of year for the committee, particularly through the asset management strategy.
Yeah, councillor Turpin?
Thanks for that. I was just thinking that when we're talking about asset strategy and a sort of a normal council housing homes, it's not really the same as having specialist provision, is it, where there's a service element as well? And so, could you explain, is it, in the long run, is it going to cost more for the council to have private operators rather than operate them ourselves?
I think I'm saying, I would suggest we want a mixed economy, and we already have a mixed economy, actually. But I would suggest we want more of everything. But on the council directly provided provision, clearly there are some choices and trade-offs for the council about where the investments are made. Stock increase versus investment in the existing stock of properties.
I think, just to clarify, it's about, sorry, it's about, other provision, we don't actually commission. We say, there's this need in the city, and you could help meet it. We don't then pay that provider to come in and do it. Whereas something like temporary accommodation, where we have the duty to provide it, we would have to commission it. So I think that's a distinction. I think there are other benefits, which, again, we will look at in the business case for what we do with our own assets about investing in older people's housing particularly, particularly where it enables family-sized housing to be vacated, and that those homes to be occupied by a larger household. And that can also impact on care costs that the council does pick up. But there has to be a decision to invest in that way. When Buchanan Green was first occupied, 90 homes, family-sized homes, were made available to families as a result of the first lettings. And those people, and for some of those people, because we monitored it, their actual care requirements reduced because they were then living in a home that was suitable for them. So there is, there's the direct cash benefits, aren't there? And then there's those wider benefits that you've talked about in terms of how you have a really good integrated community where everyone can live in the right home.
Right, thanks. This is a strategy, not a delivery plan, but in the delivery section, and it is specific refers to many of the ambitions going to be achieved through the investment of homeowners and private landlords in their own properties. So the council's role is in leveraging through guidance, information, and support. And it's important to reflect this sort of multi-ten-year approach to this, you know, because that's where people live in all tenures. So, okay. Councillor Williams, you've got a final question?
Well, it's more of an observation and stroke comment, Chair, if that's okay. On page 265, 8.1, it talks about there is no statutory requirement for an older person's housing strategy. I find that quite astounding, really. And that's something, not just, you know, why doesn't the national government, and I'm not talking about the current one, now and previous ones, I mean, we know we're getting older. We know we have housing issues. Why is there not some form of national guidance to make councils sort it out? You know, it just seems extraordinary.
Fair comment. So, James, any comments on proposals for changing national legislation?
Well, not with my gift, unfortunately, but councillor Williams, you may be interested to see, there was a, I think, a task force led by MHLG and the Treasury, I think it reported last year, late last year, with a range of recommendations across the whole of government departments. I don't believe there was a recommendation in there that it should be compulsory to have a strategy. What I would say, though, is we're doing it anyway because it's really important, and I think that's the key thing for me. We've recognised it's something this city needs, and therefore we've brought it forward without being told to do it.
Can I just add, that was an all-party parliamentary inquiry, and I was involved in that, and as was Rian Owen, our older people's independent living strategy, sorry, service provider. And that report is really good, if you get a chance to have a look at it, because it does deal with those range of issues. Interestingly, there's no requirement to have a housing strategy. The only compulsory one is actually the homeless prevention one. But it's the right thing to do, isn't it? Because otherwise you cannot coordinate all that activity.
Oh, sorry, right, yeah. I mean, we're a big council, we need the strategy written down to coordinate what we're doing, don't we? Questions on that? Are we okay with that? That's been a useful discussion. Shall we look at the recommendations? On page 253, and it is simply, now that we have considered it, so if we delete those words to approve the adoption of the new five-year older people's housing strategy as set out in the papers. If I'm happy to approve that? Yep, nods, we'll take that as a unanimous agreement there. So thank you very much. And that's the final item. So forward, we're finishing in good time ahead of our maximum schedule. Everyone's been so good, we should have another meeting in July that we weren't planning to. So, yeah, unlike it says on papers, not the 10th, but the 24th of July, and we'll deal with another couple of issues. Yeah, we'll be quite tricky, but there we are. Thanks very much for today. That's the end of the meeting, and we'll turn off the webcast and go and do other things. Okay, thanks, bye.